Good morning, everybody. It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. The Clay County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, November 30th. Our first item is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard on items not on the agenda today? No one in the audience? Steve, anyone online?
Nothing, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Move into the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kaylee, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Approval of minutes from November 16th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried. At this time, we would like to recognize two entities who have contributed very nicely to our Clay County Sheriff's Office for the purchase of a new canine. And so, we'd like to show our gratitude to Farmstead Care for a donation of $15,000 and also from Johnson Auto Repair for a donation of $1,500. Those are very generous donations and we, along with the Sheriff's Department, appreciate that very much. All right, so we'll move on then to our 8:35 item. That's the COVID update. Kathy and Jamie and Becky is back again. Good morning. Is your microphone off, Kathy?
I'm sorry, it was off. I don't have my jump drive for my PowerPoint, so I'm not...
Okay, well, you're gonna have to wing it.
(laughing) I really sincerely apologize. I don't know what, if I dropped it on the way or if I forgot to grab it.
Well, we have a copy here.
Okay, yeah.
Unfortunately, the folks online will not...
Folks online won't get it. Sorry about that.
You could probably link it to your public health page, correct?
Yes. Okay. Well, we'll move forward with the update on the numbers. Now, I don't want you to get too excited. The numbers look really good, but there's a real delay because of Thanksgiving. So, we have the holiday in here and then, of course, Minnesota Department of Health doesn't do the weekend updates either. So, we have a significant delay. So, the number, 386 active cases, is really what we would call not accurate because there will be a catch-up this week. So, we'll see them catch up following the Thanksgiving holidays. So, there'll be more accurate numbers the end of this week and into next week. So...
When you bring that, Kathy, next time, if you're gonna bring it, will you compare those numbers to the 23rd, or from, those compared to the 22nd then?
Correct, yes. That would be...
Because if we're seeing an inaccurate number for the 29th, we don't want to compare next week's to the 29th.
That's correct, yes. So, we will have those numbers for a comparison. So, unfortunately, we couldn't, you know, we just can't get better numbers at this point. So, and then, of course, the state, the active cases in Minnesota are not accurate as well. So, the 30,710, there will be some lagging data that will catch up this week. So, the week before was 35,797. So, it's really not a good comparison. Active cases in Cass County this week were 659. We don't know if they had much lag. I think their Department of Health maybe worked on Friday, so theirs might be a bit more accurate. And then, the active cases in North Dakota are 2517 for the whole state. So, yeah, so they're looking like a little bit down. The active cases on the next page by age, so it's the age distribution of the cases, and again, we're seeing higher numbers in the adolescents and we're also seeing an increase in the numbers of the 35 to 44 age group. The following slide is a cumulative cases by age for Clay County and again, our total case is 12,032. So, we're seeing again, across the age span, the variant ages that we're seeing, the levels of the 20 to 24, still at the highest level of cumulative cases. And then, the next slide is just the overview of the cases that we show every week. So, from the beginning of the pandemic until current. And again, the last number will change as the data catches up. So, we're seeing that, you know, we did see kind of a peak, we're hoping it's a peak, in the end of October, beginning of November. So, we'll see as the data catches up next week where we're at as far as this peak for the fourth wave. And then, I'll have Becky talk about the next slides.
Good morning. Before jumping into more data, I just wanted to bring up the new variant that was found. It's received a lot of media attention. I'm sure you all have heard something about it in the recent days. So, what we do know is that it was discovered in South Africa. It was first reported to the World Health Organization on 11/24. They gave it the name of Omicron or Omicron. We've had a debate on how to pronounce that in our office, so either way. So, and it is a little concerning because there had been a lull in cases in South Africa, followed by a recent surge over the past couple of weeks, which led to the detection of this variant by genetic sequencing. So, one concerning aspect is that the Delta variant had been the predominant strain circulating in South Africa like it is here, and this variant quickly has taken over as the predominant variant. So, just in a matter of weeks, compared to Delta, that took a few months to take over as the predominant strain. The World Health Organization has classified it as a variant of concern, which is kind of a level three out of their level, there's four levels of different variants. So, the first one is variants being monitored, variants of interest, variants of concern, and variants of high consequence. So, this is an elevated concern at this point. We do have more questions than answers, so hopefully, in the coming weeks, we'll know more about, you know, the impact of this variant. Another concerning aspect is that there's a large number of mutations in the spike protein portion of this variant, much larger, or many more mutations than we saw with Delta. It has not been detected in the U.S. yet, but in all likelihood, will be. The CDC surveillance team is actively monitoring for this, so likely, within the coming days to weeks, I would anticipate that we'll find it here. And then, just lastly, you know, it's not surprising that this virus has mutated. It's expected, especially with RNA viruses, they're very error-prone when they replicate, so this is not a huge surprise. What we don't know, which is a lot, unfortunately, is that, you know, we don't know if this variant is able to escape antibodies that have been made, you know, from people that have either had previous infection through antibodies that are made through vaccination. So, that's all in the works. There are studies that are currently being done and we should know within the next week or two if the vaccine will still be as effective as it was with previous variants. We also don't know if this variant is more contagious, more transmissible, or if it'll cause more severe disease. That's all, you know, again, something that will come out as more time goes on. So, good news in light of this, because this is disheartening, obviously. We're already suffering from pandemic fatigue. Booster vaccines can be modified relatively quickly if needed. If it winds up being that the booster or that the vaccines that are currently produced now need to be modified, that can be done, and work on that has already started. And even if we do see a decrease in the effectiveness of the vaccine, it's extremely unlikely that the variant would escape, you know, immune responses from the vaccine completely. So, we will not be starting all over again.
How do they name, how do they come up with that name? Sounds like a villain out of Star Wars.
Yeah, or Transformer. Well, yeah, so the next Greek alphabet letter would have been new and I think people were concerned, you know, that it would be confused with new as in N-E-W as opposed to N-U, so I don't know for sure.
Yes. Commissioner Mosho has a question.
Thank you. I know in the past, I've gone in for my flu shot in September and sometimes, by May, there are new variants. And as we move to an understanding of what the endemic living with it is, you know, how many variants do we typically see with the flu in a flu season? And only just to help us understand, kind of, maybe that's a really high-level answer with a low-level question, I'm not sure.
Yes, that is a complicated question. You know, I think typically, we see two to three circulating strains of flu per year. You know, it varies by the year. We don't yet know how often or how frequently the SARS-CoV-2 virus is going to mutate. That's still up in the air. What we do know is that we need to get more people vaccinated, because this is just fueling that. Any other questions before I move on to data? So, the next slide is just the CDC level of community transmission that they update on a weekly basis. Nothing has changed from last week, so Clay County and all of Minnesota continue to be in that high level of transmission. The next slide is Clay County deaths per week. We did unfortunately have two more Clay County residents that have passed away since last week, so we're at a total of 104 deaths for the pandemic. And then, the next slide is Clay County hospital admissions per week. So, we did see quite a bit of uptick over the past several weeks. So, we had 16 reported admissions three weeks ago, 13 the week before, and then, just five so far reported last week. So, hopeful that those admissions have actually gone down, but again, there's such a lag in the data, we'll see by the end of the week if that number is actually larger. And then, hospital capacity in Fargo. So, at the time of this report, Asensio had one staffed ICU bed for adults and zero pediatric staffed ICU beds. Sanford had five adult ICU beds and three pediatric ICU beds available, and the VA had two adult ICU beds available. Statewide throughout North Dakota, available adult ICU beds was at 23 and pediatric ICU beds at five.
Has that statewide number gone down? I mean, or gone up, I mean, in terms of available beds?
It has fluctuated. So, I think last week, that number was, for the adult ICU beds, was lower than that, so I think that's, you know, increased a little bit. It's the pediatric ICU beds that seem to be more worrisome. And then, the next slide shows statewide hospitalization data for North Dakota as of yesterday. There's currently 166 hospitalized due to COVID with 23 in the ICU. So, this is a little bit of an increase from last week at this time. The chart in the middle shows current hospitalizations broken down by age. Currently, there are three pediatric admissions due to COVID, and the chart on the right shows the age of, or the age groups of total admissions throughout the pandemic. And the next slide is the updated graphic from the Sanford Healthcare System. As of November 23rd, again, seeing the same trends, week after week after week, the red people represent those that are not vaccinated and the white represent those that are. Overwhelming majority of cases that are hospitalized continue to be among the unvaccinated. So, 48 of the 51 patients on ventilators are not vaccinated. And then, breakthrough cases, the updated data provided by the Minnesota Department of Health. Again, still continuing to see very small percentages of breakthrough cases in Minnesota. So, we're at 2.855% of those that are fully vaccinated that have wound up testing positive for COVID. Breakthrough hospitalizations at 0.12% and deaths at 0.02%. That's all I have.
Good morning. So, the next slide, the statewide vaccine data for 11/23/21 for those five years of age and over. The individuals with at least one dose is at 69.7% statewide, and it was 69.0% last week. And then, those that have completed the series, 64.2%, and it was 64.1% last week. So, those first and doses are, first and second doses are crawling. I did just take a peek at the map last night to look, and across our area, we're like 54% for Clay County and pretty much within 50 to 57% around us. So, we're all in that kind of same area. And then, looking at the total third doses and booster doses, 932,115, and last week, we were at 816,163. So, a lot of the energy is going into those booster doses. Looking at those 5 to 11, 21% have had that first dose, still zero for the second dose. 16% is what we saw in that age group last week, so. And then, I'll just flip over to the next slide, which is the number of doses administered by Clay County Public Health. So, for last week, we hit 17,512 doses, 246 last dose, so we're seeing a decline in the doses administered. And we have a breakdown of, that was the Pfizer and Moderna. We didn't have Johnson &amp; Johnson last week for the first time. 16 doses were given for that 5 to 11 age group. 218 were booster doses, seven were first doses, five were second doses. We continue to offer first and second doses, but we just have a few here and there, but continue to offer those. But the majority of what we were administering this last week were the booster doses. And then, for this week, our clinics are planned, we just had the one clinic on Tuesday. It was a full day and into the evening last week because of Thanksgiving, but we were having three clinics this week. So, we have today, we have a clinic at MSUM from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock, offering Pfizer first, second doses and booster doses, and Moderna first and second doses and booster doses. Then, back in the Family Service Center from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., Moderna first and second doses and booster doses, Pfizer first and second doses for 12 and over, booster doses for 18 years and older. And then, on Wednesday, we have a clinic from 2:30 to 5:30 at the Family Service Center, offering Pfizer first doses for the 5 to 11-year-olds, Pfizer first and second for 12 and over, and booster doses for 18 and over as well. And then, on Thursday, we have a clinic scheduled for 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Moderna first and second doses and booster, Pfizer first and second doses for 12-year and older, and boosters for 18 and over. And those clinics are all posted on our website. And, do you want me to?
Commissioner Mosho has a comment or question?
Yes, thank you. Boy, you're really doing serious work with those doses administered, especially if you look at last week being a holiday week, so thank you for that work. I did have a comment from a couple folks in the public. When people are bringing their 5 to 11-year-olds for those vaccine clinics, there's a little bit of hesitancy just with timing, because having them in the middle of the week, if they, for some reason, have a reaction and then spike a fever and then they can't, they're keeping them home. So many people have exhausted a lot of sick days. So, the comment was if there could be one on a Friday to, because if there was an issue that came up, there's just, it's a convenience, I think, for some people.
Okay. And two weeks ago, we had a Friday, but we can do that again.
Right, thank you.
So, then, just looking at the testing activity, we are seeing 10.83% positivity rate, which is a reduction from the 12.445% the previous week, so less of the positives being seen. That's the week of November 21st. Total people tested was the 607, and then, you can see the breakdown for the North Dakota and Minnesota in the number of positives. And then, we talked about the clinics are at the, of course, there are many opportunities for testing in the county, but for the vault testing site, we have availability Monday through Thursday and then again on Sundays.
Yes, Commissioner Kaylee.
And looking at that vaccination data, you said Clay County is probably right around 54% with what we know of for fully vaccinated individuals. And I understand that is lower again, because we just added that five, you know, the little. What do we really need to get to percentage-wise to have a real impact in our area with vaccination?
Well, with the Delta variant, you know, initially, when the pandemic started, they were, their goal was 70%. We have to get this herd immunity at 70%. Over the pandemic, because various strains and numbers of circulating viruses in the communities, so many of them raised that 70% they didn't feel was adequate to really develop a good herd immunity in the communities. So, they really haven't set a hard and fast 80%, but they're kind of ramping up that we need to see a higher percentage of people vaccinated in order to get better herd immunity, in order to stop the community transmission. So, although unofficially set, they raised that 70% to a higher level because of the variant strains. Now, unfortunately, as we see a new strain emerging in another country and potentially will be in the U.S., probably is in the U.S. currently, just hasn't been detected yet, that will be a concern as well. What's the percentage to get the number of people vaccinated to be able to, you know, have better immunity? The big message is, you know, again, as we've said every week, and some of you have repeated that, we need to get people vaccinated. That's our, you know, that's the most important strategy to continue to fight any other variant strains and then this new Omicron strain. We need to get a higher percentage of people vaccinated. Will we hit 80%? You know, I'm not sure. As much as it's been pushed out, we've been pushing out the initial vaccines. Now, it's like, don't wait to get your booster, please get your booster. Everybody is eligible for that, as long as it's been six months from Moderna and Pfizer and two months from the J&amp;J. So, the message is, we just, we continually, we sound like a broken record, I know, but get your vaccines, get your vaccines. That's the best measure we have to fight against the virus, not only Delta, but again, any new strains, because it really circulates in the unvaccinated folks and those are the hosts where this really replicates. So, yeah, so that's a long answer to maybe your short question, and maybe I didn't answer it all completely. If you have other questions, go ahead and...
No, you got it. I'm also wondering too, this last wave seems to be taking longer than some of the previous waves. I'm wondering if there's any chatter with the state epes or others about why specifically they're thinking this wave is lasting longer?
You know, I don't think anybody knows for sure. We didn't expect it to last this long. There was statistical modeling that was done, you know, prior to the fall surge and it was looking like we would have a very sharp increase of cases, followed by, you know, a sharp decrease in cases like we've seen in other waves, and that's just not happening. And I don't think anyone knows for sure why. The hard thing is that we're trying to predict not only what the virus is doing, but also human behavior and trying to add those two together and predict, you know, what's gonna happen is a huge, huge challenge. I wish I had an answer.
One last thing then. Becky, you said that they're already starting work on if the boosters need to be adjusted at all with this new Omicron variant. I have an appointment to get my booster this week, so I'll be seeing you guys in a couple days for that. Encourage others to get boosted too, if you're due for that. So, if I get my booster this week and then, let's say, they do tweak something, can I then just come right back in and get that new updated one, or would it be another six-month wait, or what's...
You know, I think that's to be determined. You know, they've, researchers have thrown out different timelines and the estimate is it would take four to six weeks to get another vaccine ramped up, but again, that's, we don't know for sure.
Thanks.
I want to do a follow-up to her first question, too. Commissioner Kaylee's first question deals with herd immunity. And Becky, as an epidemiologist, I said that right, didn't I?
Yes.
I don't think I could spell it. The closer we get to herd immunity, does that help reduce the chances of viruses mutating to what we currently have, for example, with this new one now?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, the more that the virus is able to circulate, especially in people that are not vaccinated, the virus is replicating more and for longer in people that have no antibodies.
And can you explain why? Because it needs to have a living organism, right?
Correct, yes. The virus does not live on inanimate objects. It actually breaks into our own cells and takes over our cells, so it needs a human host to be able to replicate.
And someone vaccinated helps?
Right, because they have antibodies. And, you know, and that's also true of people that have had previous infection, to some extent, although they don't have an antibody response as long as people that are vaccinated, which is what is being shown. But, you know, people are infected with the virus and it takes some time for your body to recognize that, but if you have those antibodies already there, it's less time, you know, for the virus to circulate in your body before, you know, our immune systems essentially attack it and neutralize it. If that makes sense.
Well, it does. I have asked that same question in multiple different ways.
The immune system is very, very complex.
Well, but it's also, I think it's, I think it's, I continue to try to help people understand why, why there's additional significant reasons to get vaccinated. Because we all are constantly asking the question, when is this ever gonna end? And if that thing can keep mutating and keep mutating, this will never end.
And that's why, you know, public health has pushed so hard to get people vaccinated. It is really a race against the clock, because the longer this goes on, the more virus that can circulate throughout the communities and unvaccinated people. It's just, it's prolonging the pandemic and prolonging when we can officially say it's at that endemic stage.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yeah, I just, we can't belabor this enough to try and get the point across, but I was talking to Kathy before the meeting, and I'm kind of a get-up-at-five-in-the-morning-news person, and I know there's not data in on Omicron sufficient to where you can specifically say things, but I read this morning about a small study done in Israel and some of the results are coming in from South Africa. And it does reinforce what we already know about Delta, is that even if there's a reduced efficacy of the immunizations to keep you from becoming infected, there is still a much heightened chance that you aren't gonna die if you've had immunization. You're not gonna have serious consequences out of this. It's gonna be about with something similar to the flu, which you still have to be careful because you need to go and isolate yourself and deal with that and not spread it. But, you know, just to belabor the thing we're trying to get through to people, is that you're, we're already hearing, well, you see all these variants, the immunization doesn't work. Well, yeah, it works better than the flu immunizations do, and it keeps you from dying. And I just think that can't be stressed, not, people really need, just take a breath. This is a health decision, not a political decision. And go get your immunizations and go get your boosters if you've had, already had your shot. And if the future boosters are gonna address variants specifically, don't wait. Get your booster now, because you don't want to incubate a new variant. You don't want to be the, you know, the initiator of this. There'll be, there'll be chance to get an enhanced booster somewhere down the road, but I know you guys keep saying it, keep saying, I just want to give an amen to it. And what a little bit of data is coming out has not changed the fact that this will keep it from being severe.
All right. Any more questions? Any more comments? Thank you. Next week?
Next week, there is no meeting, is that correct?
Oh, yes. You won't see us next week. You'll see us in two weeks.
We could show up, but...
Will they still, will you still put the data on the website?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And maybe if you can, if you can just kind of send each of us a.
Will do.
This by electronic, so we.
Yeah. I can get that sent. Thank you.
We need something to do during our off time. Request to purchase transport vehicle for our West Central Juvenile Detention Facility. Good morning, James.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Coming here today to request to purchase a transport vehicle for the juvenile center. We internally service to purchase these vehicles every three years. And we're up, and we have a, one that's, we would like to keep a 2013 also. Usually every year we, when we purchase a new one, we put one up for auction with the expanded services at the juvenile center that we've had. And the need from other Clay County entities sometimes to borrow a transport vehicle that has a safety partitions in it, would request to keep the 2013 also.
Yeah, you've kind of indicated in your, your attachment C to us, the reasons why you wanted to keep that.
Correct.
Certainly makes sense with the increased issues that you have there.
And I would say, just for added context, kind of inflation costs and whatnot, the price we got from the state bid is $30,937. Our lot for a 2022 model, our last purchase was a 2018 model for $22,010. So in the course of four years, it's a 40% increase, 10% per year. I don't see.
I'd imagine most of that came in the last 18 months, that most of that increase.
Most definitely.
And you're already looking at 48 weeks out to get it.
Correct. Yep, it's going to be a full year.
You didn't, you didn't show in here what dollar amount you actually have in your internal service fund for that particular line item. Did Lori give that to you?
Yeah, she, she confirmed that I have, well, there's enough money in there to pay for that. There's, she told me in emails, something like $33,000, $34,000. So we just barely have enough to cover that full purchase.
Does that, does, does the internal service line item get added to your, is that, does that go to the secure budget, doesn't it?
Yep, and non-secure.
Oh, you're proportionate?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I've just moved, we approved this purchase and approved retention of the, the older vehicle.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Abinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Comment?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. So your internal service fund, is that refreshed with a new dollar amount every year? So this would be coming out of this year's internal service fund or 22?
It would be a, a combination of the past four years.
Okay.
I set, set aside a certain amount each year to.
Commissioner Kaylee, the, the new dollar amount, the new purchase amount becomes the basis for the new amount that's annually put in to the internal service fund to be replaced and in another, whatever Lori determines the life that to be, in this case is what, three or four years?
Correct.
So you can take that $32,726, divide that by three, and then each year, I believe Lori adds 3% to that for inflationary purposes. And that's, that's kind of how she does that for.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
You bet. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I guess one more question.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Sorry. So I know it's virtually impossible to buy anything right now, vehicle wise. Were there no 2020 or 2021 models available that we could just refit? Or is this the only thing we're looking at?
Boy, I have not the slightest idea. It's a state bid thing, and that's the, the model that they had. I guess I didn't look for older models at all.
Okay.
I didn't do that.
I think the market on old vehicles, you can, you can almost get a new one for what you pay for a used one.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing, yes. I'm just curious.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just on that, when you look at state bids, it's usually a substantial savings. And, and whatever you can get these days on a state bid, it's, it's physically sound to go with that.
Any further, any else? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. You're good to go, James.
Thank you.
Our next item is request to submit a letter of intent to be certified as our own merit system for all social service employees.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
And we have.
Yes, we have Diane Cluck, our Office Support Specialist. So she's the one who works most directly with our merit system. Okay, so what we're here today is requesting approval to submit a letter, a letter to the Minnesota merit system, requesting withdrawal, withdrawal from the Minnesota merit system and also that they would certify us, Clay County, as our own merit system. So just a little bit of background, in Minnesota, the responsibilities of human services is shared between the State Department of Human Services and the local county social services. And in, we're one of 11 states that operate that way. The other states are state administered, so they're state employees, whereas we're county employees. Because we receive federal funds to administer, and we administer federal programs, those states that are not state administered have to comply with the federal merit system standards. So those 11 states have developed their own merit system. And in Minnesota, we have that. It's a state program and we, they work with us on our vetting our candidates, our hiring. We, we get lists of potential candidates to hire from. They work with us on our civil rights requirements, our affirmative action requirements, and, and those kinds of things. It's been in existence since 1940, and over the years, many counties have withdrawn from the Minnesota merit system and have been certified to do their own because they have robust human resource departments that can meet those federal requirements. We are at that point, we feel that we are able to administer our own and meet those federal requirements. And the biggest reason why we're looking at this is we have found that there is a lot of duplicative efforts that are happening between what the Minnesota merit system requires and what we already do. So it's become cumbersome, it's made our hiring practices a bit cumbersome. We feel that we could get a better candidate pool and vet those applicants in a better way than what, what's happening through the Minnesota merit system. Our cost for participating in the merit system has increased over the years because multiple counties have done what we're requesting today. They've moved out of the merit system, merit system has certified them as their own entity, and so therefore the cost of operating has been distributed amongst the remaining counties. Now, they are continuing to try to reduce their costs, but we've still seen some, some increases. I think in the packet, I did share with you a map of the counties that are in merit system currently and those that are planning to exit. Last data I received, so for example, in January of 2015, there were 70 counties involved with the Minnesota merit system. It's anticipated for 2022 that that number will be 39. So that, you know, over those years, more and more counties have worked with the merit system to be certified themselves. So that's kind of the history and what, what we're asking for. In 2009, this was something that we were pursuing. At that time, the board did approve us to submit a letter of intent. We started working with the Minnesota merit system. It takes about a year to, you know, get everything in place and for them to certify you. We had some, at that time, it was Dawn Slusher-Gruel was our HR, and she left, and then Carrie Alme, and through the course of transition, we kind of lost steam with that effort. But we are ready to resurrect our efforts and move forward with having our own certification.
We had a good discussion about this at PIC. One question that I did not ask that day that, would, and maybe this Darren or Rhonda, either one of you, would this change the way our state auditing process would work? You know, because, and again, I go back to, when we have our state audits, they, they also review that we're in compliance with federal contract and rules. Because we're part of the merit system, part of that is probably anticipated that they've covered that. So do you, do you see any changes in, in the auditing system?
I do not anticipate that, just based on being involved in the state audits and the data that they're looking for is more at the program level than at the employee level. The merit system is really our employee.
It's about, it's about hiring.
Yeah, so I, while I don't know for sure, I don't anticipate that changing or looking different.
You know, again, our PIC, we've reviewed this, spent quite a bit of time talking about it, and it was unanimously recommended by PIC that we move forward with this.
I guess I agree, we discussed this quite a bit, and I make a motion, we move forward with that letter of intent.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know many of us are headed to our conference this week, and we each have our own AMC portfolio. It would be interesting, I think Commissioner Kaylee's on the Health and Human Services Committee, it would be interesting to kind of feel the room, what, what other counties are, are seeing. It's certainly an interesting trend, and I think when we're all having workforce challenges as it is, trying to be the most efficient in how we recruit top-notch employees is important, but that might be a question you might want to raise.
Yeah, definitely. I did just see yesterday an email come out from the Minnesota merit system, and they're looking to schedule a conference call with merit system counties in January. You know, they are definitely feeling the exodus of the merit of participation, and obviously that's going to impact their operations. So I think there will be further discussions about what the merit system looks like in the future going forward.
All right, all right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is a request to allocate American Rescue Plan Act funds for pre-sentence investigator writing, investigation writer. Eve and Brian?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. As you mentioned this morning, we do have a request that initiated from Janelle Chaney from the Minnesota Department of Corrections in regards to pre-sentence investigations. This kind of follows Mr. Melton's request earlier this year in regards to the impacts that COVID has had on, on the court system and the logged down area. The pre-sentence investigation is an important part of process of many of the cases, and have Mr. Melton kind of share some of that.
I thought I would just, on Janelle's behalf, I am supportive of this. I think, as we've talked about before, where we're looking at backlog, and, and we've met with the courts, I think as long as we can say as a county, we're doing everything in our power to make sure that we're supportive of, you know, the funnel narrows, and there's certain things that we worry about. We don't want the county attorney's office to be the spot where there's a clog. This is another area where Janelle has identified, you know, the PSI, pre-sentence investigation is something very important, standard with any sentencing of a felony level or domestic abuse cases where there's violence involved, you would have a PSI involved. And so you can see some of her numbers, really maybe starting back in about June or so, and that's kind of that timeframe where we're moving. And both seeing the backlog come forward, plus being in full motion, you know, current cases coming in, the, the chance that that's a spot where we could have a, a backlog or a clogging in the courts to make sure those are, are getting done, I think is important. So I think it is something that is useful, helpful, and I would be supportive of it as far as helping. I mean, we know we've talked to the courts, obviously court administration through the state and the things they have to do, public defender's office and, and just the defendants alone. We've talked a lot about, there's a lot of different responsibilities to go around, but at least if we can say we've identified different pieces that the county has responsibility for, try to aid and make sure that we're, that we're not the, the long pole in the tent, if you will. So I think that's something that Janelle's done a good job here. I think this is important and helpful and would definitely be supportive of it.
Commissioner Mojo?
Thank you. Both Commissioner Campbell and I serve on that ARPA committee and really did have a good dialogue about this and felt it was certainly appropriate within the realms of the criteria for ARPA funding. I think that there are some, some unknown consequences for all of the disruptions that COVID caused, and this is just one that has, has really risen to the table. Using these funds for a contract worker really, really seemed to make the most sense. So with that, I would make a motion to approve the request to come out of ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Abinger. Any further discussion? Commissioner Gross.
How long are these funds good for? Is it annual funding or? I don't understand any of this funding.
Commissioner Gross, I think in our ARPA committee, we talked about this, and we, we did specify a certain period of time where these funds would be available for, which, at which then that would end. And I, I don't know, I think she said, was it one year or was it 16 months or something?
I think it was a 16 month.
I thought it was 16 months.
That's what she was looking for. 16 months for hers, which is within the ARPA piece, being on the ARPA committee, and I know Commissioners also know, I mean, we have that time period to spend the money, so it's a, it's an appropriate timeframe.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Do we have any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Request to allocate ARPA funds for front service counter project at highway building. We have Dave, Justin, Joe.
Good morning.
Good morning. I see you wore a different mask today.
Our first item is the front service counter highway department project, request of ARPA funds. We would feel this would be a good, a good barrier for our staff. There is a fair amount of walk-in traffic that comes through our building, you know, we're joint facility, so there could be customers from Mendot, City of Morehead. It's a little lighter on the City of Morehead, they don't have a lot of traffic out there, but there's still from time to time people come in. We do have a lot of moving permits, there's a lot of house, house moves with the, all the recent activity up and down the river. Folks come in, make sure they're using the right route and getting information. In the fall, we've got a lot of harvest permits. That's probably our, some of our biggest traffic is local farmers, they come in and they buy the harvest permit, lets them load an extra 10% and then they pay like $60 for it, so it's a, it's a pretty good deal. It's something that, you know, all entities do sell this. We've got utility permits, so a lot of times there could be a Quest or Mid-City Cable person coming in, making sure they got their permits done correctly. We sell mailbox standards out of there, so there's, there's just a fair amount of walk-in traffic, and we'd just like to have a little barrier, I guess, between our, our two staff. There is a little security part that would come with this. A lot of times, there is only one staff up front, and if they use the restroom or, or have to go in the back to get somebody, then all of a sudden, there's no one up front. And I know I've heard a lot of times they come out of the bathroom and there's someone wandering down the hall, and it's kind of creeps them out a little bit. And, you know, we, we have had threats, you know, a few years back, there was a Clay County resident that was writing letters to county highway department, to sheriff and Commissioners, and we would just hate to have somebody from, whether it be on our, due to our business or any one of the other entities' business there to come in and have a. and have the ability to get right into our building, but.
Yeah, I mean, this basically is the same project that we did, similar to like at the Family Service Center, where we put up a counter with a glass barrier to it, and then added a, you know, in his scenario, we have a door with a card access to. So employees come in, they can let themselves in, and it's a two-counter deal going on here. One's a lower 188 to beat 188, and with our, you know, total project cost of this is $22,794. And I guess we've been to ARPA, and the ARPA committee has approved this, and. So we got any questions?
Yeah, I, we did talk about it, and it does make sense. Like, the only one thing that I would question would still be, somebody can still come in that door and walk the hall.
Well, there's, you'd have to go through that locked door.
Yeah, yeah, the door will always be locked.
Right.
So nobody that doesn't have, it's like a mini lobby we're almost creating for them to be there, they can't.
I think this is maybe similar, we're adding a card access. I believe this is similar to what we did in the Social Services Department last year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
To where we had added that card access as well.
Yep, exactly, yep.
So somebody can walk in, and they're in that entryway, and then if they don't have card access, they have a deal they can push then for service?
What we've done is just almost a bell is what we've done, that kind of lets somebody know that we've done it. So cheaper where you had to notify somebody is what we've done.
I mean, it is a, it is a public building, so.
And there is always somebody up front, you know, I mean, there's, other than.
I know the one time I went there, that door was locked, but somebody was right there to let me in, so.
Along with this is a button for both staff. If they're on the phone or whatever, and they see somebody that they know is coming, they can let them in.
But now this will create a little bit of a lobby.
Yes.
Similar to the government center. So the front doors will be open, you'll just go into that tiny lobby area, which that, I mean, there's always someone sitting there.
Yeah, we made it big enough, so the furniture there can stay, so somebody can come in. It's not too small, it's enough for somebody to sit and wait if they need to.
Okay. ARPA committee did recommend approval.
I'm making a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebinger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried. All right, Dave, your next one is a request for approval of quiet zone establishment letter for Glendon.
Right, I'll have Justin give a little information. This is for our portion, right, of the quiet zone within the city of Glendon?
So as part of the Park Avenue reconstruction, we added medians by the railroad tracks to become, it was Glendon's wish to become a quiet zone through town. And now that they completed the medians on Partridge, this is kind of the next step in establishing the quiet zone, and beans that we're the road authority on Park Avenue, we have to send a letter to support and establish the quiet zone. It's just part of the standard procedure through Burlington Northern.
Yeah, this is, I think it's something that they want to have from county. I guess the only, I read this, and the only thing that I, the very last sentence reads wrong to me. It says, "And do concur that this new quiet zone can and should be established with full support of the Clay County, Minnesota." I think the word "the" should be out of there.
Just take out "the."
Just to, we're going to send it.
Yep.
Read right. All right, is there, we have a motion to support?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
That other deal that you had at ARPA, we're going to bring that up at building.
Okay.
So we'll see if we can still figure out a way to help with that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, next we have a request from the City of Morehead to purchase tax forfeited property for, with Stormwater Pond. And we got Bob, and we got Mr. Shockley here. And we're graced with the presence of all the brain power of Morehead here, huh?
Wow, thanks for the warm welcome.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
A little bit of background here, in July of 2015, the city council approved a plat for the 12th Avenue South Business Park. In August, that plat was revised to include a dedicated lot for stormwater treatment. That stormwater treatment was to be a pond that was going to be privately constructed by the property owners on two of the lots, and then turned over to the city after it was completed. Construction began in 2016, but was never completed. In January of 2019, approximately two-thirds of the adjacent property owners petitioned the city to take the project over and construct the pond. The city did that and finished construction in 2020. As part of the project, the owner of the lot in question today was required to deed the lot to the city. That step in the process was quite frankly missed, and the lot is now in tax forfeit status, and the city, therefore, the city is requesting that the county transfer that property to the city, which will essentially forever be used as a stormwater pond.
Well, it certainly meets the requirement of public use, right, for our purpose. Any further questions of Bob or John? So the request is to move with resolution 2021-0927-D.
Move, we go forward with that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ebinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have our 2022 budget update. Steve and Laurie are here this morning.
Good morning again, commissioners. As you're well aware, on September 21st of this year, the board approved resolution 2021-43. This resolution established our preliminary levy, allowing Laurie to certify the budget with the state of Minnesota by October 1st deadline. It's been the practice of this board to request an update on the preliminary levy budget prior to the truth and taxation hearing, which is going to be held December 14th at 6:00 PM. While we are required to base that truth and taxation presentation on the information that was approved in the preliminary levy, the board can, this board continues to have the opportunity to provide us guidance and direction with the levy prior to our December 21st a finalization of the 2022 budget. When the preliminary budget was set, this board just mentioned the desire to relook at the budget as a whole continually, and also specifically to look at two areas with the Ignite and the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development Funding allotment. And so we'll be looking for your direction either this week or on the 14th prior to the finalization. Before you this morning is a financial packet of information that shares how we reach the preliminary levy. If you have any questions or comments throughout the presentation, please, please let us know. And so the first documents that I want to kind of share are the tax, sales tax levy summary. It's important from the standpoint that over the years, we've utilized sales tax funding, or excuse me, we've utilized levy dollars in addition to sales tax to pay for the law enforcement facility and the correctional facility. And so through this year, we provided a number of updates in the sales tax. Today, we're here just to share that the sales tax continue to come in strong. If you look at the highlighted yellow column, you'll see the 2021, 2021 sales tax summary. I would note the two, both in November and December, the green highlighted areas are our projections from last year, or took last year's numbers in there. And so we do, we've received the first payment for November, I think, which is right around 300 and.
307,000.
307,000. And so we'll receive three additional payments, one for November and two for December. If we don't see any additional increases in November and December, we would, we would receive $3,778,510.74, which would be an 18.13% increase over what we received last year. Just for a little bit of a history, I did put in a file, in your file, a flyer that we provided to our citizens initially when we were looking to go to them to vote. If you look on there, the Correctional Facility Law Enforcement Center was projected at $52 million. We would be looking at paying it through maturing debt, wind tax of roughly $150,000. This board began to put $50,000 a year away, starting in 2014, to increase or to pay for the portion of the costs. And then we also have some lease, lease payments that we started receiving, or received from the City of Morehead for the Law Enforcement Center. And so I think that that's of interest, because Laurie's also included a summary of tax needed for the jail and law enforcement bonds, and so, I mean, we have Laurie touch on this.
Yeah, if you want to turn to that page, this is a summary of the bond payments. And what I did was use this to determine how much tax dollars we would need to use annually. And what I've done is I've taken the sales tax, collected the actuals for through 2020 and '21, and then projected at a 2% growth per year to see what we're going to need. We're already at a point where we do not need to use any tax dollars. And that's even, you know, with the modest 2% increase, so. And with the projections of last year's numbers for the rest of the year, so. We won't be needing to use any tax dollars if the sales tax keeps coming in as it is.
So based on your projection, we would, we would have an excess collection versus what the bonds were to the tune of 7 million?
Right.
And, yeah, that's, because originally, when we planned this, the original amount that we had estimated, we would have still fallen short under, because I believe we originally estimated 2 million? 1.8 million?
The original, the original plan that we presented was 1.6 to.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, but I, that's, I think the number that I had was 2 million, but.
So our sales tax that's been coming in, if you, on that front page, you can look at the.
Almost double.
The growth. 2019 compared to '18 was a 16.44%, and then 3.4% in 2020. I had to make an adjustment because they, they did an audit, and they gave us a huge chunk, so I had to remove that. And it was just basically a guess on my part. But and then again, it were at 18%, it would probably end up being more like 20 when we get our final payment in.
One of the things, commissioners too, when we first started this, the online collections weren't, weren't coming in. And then the state legislature also did some action that required online sales to be taxed. That was beneficial for, from a tax collection standpoint. Yes?
Laurie, in the summary of the tax dollars needed for the jail, does that factor in the lease payment from the City of Morehead and the wind?
What we've, initially, we wanted lease dollars from the City of Morehead to cover part of that payment, the wind energy. Using those to cover part of our payment, now we won't need to use those at all.
And so that stays, that stays in the general fund then?
Correct, yep.
Excellent.
It's used, those numbers would be used to reduce any levy we would have to potentially have, because it's revenues to offset. That's, that's good news.
Very good news.
So, oh, I'm sorry, so just moving forward, as we start to see these numbers grow bigger in terms of basically cash balance, there are certain requirements of what we can and cannot use those. Like, if we were all done with this $7.8 million that's showing here, there's, are we limited to our use?
We are limited to our use, but also we would probably defuse the bonds early.
Right.
And that, those are our choices.
We have that option, right?
Right, we could build those pods, I believe.
Right.
Or defuse the bonds early and stop the sales.
That's really encouraging to see that.
That was my question.
Okay.
All right, all right. We wanted just to bring that forward, one, to keep you up to date, and also just show that has had an impact on the 2022 proposed budget. The first, the next document we'd like to have you take a look at is the summary of the 2022 tax levy by funds. If you look at our category of funds, the tax levy dollar amount proposed is $43,526,268. Within this budget, we have $454,236 in additional new requests, and we'll be touching on those here shortly. We had insurance savings this year of $1 million in a 5% reduction of costs. We've also utilized roughly $1 million in revenues from our fund balances. And there's also a proposed COLA increase of 2% of $669,153, with some of our bargaining units having already settled for next year. That gives us a total levy of $42,649,657, when we, when we, minus the county program aid of $3,935,730. We have a spread levy of $38,713,927, lest the, when we take into consideration the new construction adjustment of 1.23%, we arrived at the 4.3% levy that this board certified earlier this year. As in past, the commission has asked just for a review of what the new requests are. Again, just to note that these requests have all been through the PIC committee and been at least brought forward in support of at least the consideration. And so the first item on your list is your motor vehicle. We spent a lot of time over the last two years addressing motor vehicle, and this board has provided some additional support that's led to decreased wait times there. And so that is our first item. The second item is personnel subscriptions. We've utilized David Drounsen Associates through AMC for a subscription to provide service for different HR issues. They've been extremely valuable to Darren and his staff. That dollar amount is $4,900 for next year. It's allowed us to save the use of our labor attorney on a number of occasions. Technology services is two areas. The first one is training. The Microsoft contract that Rory's talked about earlier has ended. There's a new contract that's come out, and it does not include the training that was previously included in the previous contract. And also, this board has made significant investments in equipment over the last two years with COVID, and we want to make sure that we have the adequate internal service to deal with the replacements moving forward. The next item is a veteran service, veteran service officer position. It's administrative assistant. We currently have an administrative assistant that's there half-time. And we have volunteers for a number of years that have covered the afternoon portion. We've frankly run into challenges with being able to maintain the number of, the number of volunteers to do that. And so the request came forward to make that part-time position a full-time position. The Sheriff's Department has requested a additional deputy. The Corrections Department has requested an additional position. That position isn't to work in the jail, but is to deal with the transports, with the additional courts and backlogs, and also the virtual court hearings that we have. They're, the two people that they have designated to get people to court currently is not adequate, and so they made that request. Extension has requested moving one of their halftime positions to an increased position. This board made the decision to at least initially support a .8 FTE position, and this would be the difference between, between the halftime and the .8. Public health appropriation actually is, the Barnesville ambulance has just had a smaller increase of $802. Downtown Morehead, Inc., this board has made the decision to potentially allocate $25,000 to work with Downtown Morehead, Inc. for economic development, working with our different agencies. Again, within Clay County, we're not looking to replace them, but just work and support, and really have a main focus on Clay County and Minnesota as a whole. on, on Clay County and Minnesota as a whole. The, the next one, appropriation of $5,500, that, if you recall, that came from Cindy Gray in the Metro Crog. The request there is for citywide housing needs analysis, and that was for, again, $5,500. The next one is the, came from the greater, or, excuse me, from the chamber, the appropriation for the Ignite program. The initial request from, from the chamber was $50,000. The board initially has, has made an appropriation of $25,000. This is, again, is one of the areas that you had indicated you would like to relook at here as prior to establishing the final, final budget for 2022. The highway equipment maintenance shop, again, equipment over 500, increased to $10,000. That was a, a, a piece of machinery to, to judge signs, the quality of signs or the life cycle of the signs. Currently, we, we share, or we, I guess we shouldn't say share, we borrow from the state. And, and Dave has, Dave has just asked that they have that availability to, to utilize that. It did save the county a significant dollar amount earlier this year when we, when we utilized that equipment, and we were able to push off some signed purchases to, to another year. Internal service also is requesting a $50,000 increase. We've had some discussions over the last few weeks with the increased, increased costs of, of equipment. We're constantly battling that issue, and so this would be a step to increase that to make sure that we can continue to purchase our, our vehicles for the highway. And the last piece is a, is, we also had a number of discussions of this at the board level. This is social service requests from the financial service department, eligibility workers. We have, we've actually have three workers that probably, I think, have a combined experience of over, over 80 years who are retiring or have started to retire, and, and we're looking to have, make sure that we have adequate staff to, to meet the caseloads. So, those are your, those are the requests that are included within the budget. Are there any questions?
Mr. Keely?
Couple of questions. Okay, so if we back up a page, the insurance excess, we were going to set aside a chunk of that as seed money, were we not, for going independently insured? What, how does that work in there?
We think we talked about 250,000.
250,000?
Right, I have not put that in the budget.
Well, I think what you had talked about doing was earmarking, earmarking the dollars in reserve, it wasn't necessarily going to be.
Yeah, well, we can definitely do that. We've, we've got plenty of reserve, we can earmark 250,000 for that purpose.
Okay. Just to make sure that wasn't.
I think it would almost be good to establish a, an account that would show those dollars in there, and even if it, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we increase our levy to do that, but make that shift from reserves to, I know it's.
Yeah, we'll just designate a portion of the fund balance for that.
Right.
And so it'll have its own separate line.
So that future boards can see this amount has been set aside for the purpose of whether, whether the county in the future could go self-insured or to help buy down increases. We've got guaranteed rates for a certain period of time based on our previous contract, but I think that would be a smart move. Okay, yes, you have some more questions?
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. And then on the Ignite project with the chamber, did we ever find out if other municipalities and entities had committed and at what levels and what that's looking like?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Keely. We, we did get some information in regards to it. At this point, Ignite has indicated that this, the Cass County has allocated at least in their preliminary levy $100,000. Again, that decision, just like ours, won't be finalized until the final budget is done. The city, the, excuse me, Morehead School District has, has put forward, I believe, $20,000. And I think we have also allocated, I would, I should, I don't want to miss.
Have that in front of me.
Do, okay.
Thank you. Morehead Public Schools, they have committed $20,000. Fargo Public Schools has committed $20,000. West Fargo, $20,000 as well. Northern Cass Public Schools, $5,000 committed. Cass County, $100,000 committed. And I believe there was some discussion with Morehead that just hasn't shown up.
Well, you know, going back, Steve, to when you and I sat in that conversation with Shannon full with the chamber, she fully believed that, that this type of investment would be, based on their research, would be covered under ARPA, right? Am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I'm, I'm wondering if now, if it wouldn't be in our best interest to remove that from our regular levy and send it to ARPA for consideration in that regard? Is there any, any thoughts from the board?
Well, I certainly can speak to that. I have been concerned, one, I will say, I was concerned initially because I didn't know there was other entities that had committed dollars. Knowing that there's a collaboration with metro entities that have committed, I think that it makes more sense for Clay County to commit in some form or fashion. I think that because a large part of what they're doing has to do with workforce, and I just traveled for Thanksgiving, and on most of the grocery, the, the fast food places, there were signs that said, "The workforce shortage is the new pandemic." And, and really, that is what a lot of businesses are seeing. There is a workforce issue that has come out of this, and I think that it certainly would, would make sense for us to commit funds that are ARPA, that are from ARPA, so that it reduces the, the strain on the levy. And I think that would help with, initially, I did not vote for the preliminary levy because I was hopeful that there were some areas we could reduce.
Are there any other comments on, on the, on that, the Ignite piece? I know that, I think, well, Steve and Lori, if, if it's the intent of the board to make an adjustment there, they'd like to know about that so they can update us, and it can be updated for the documents that would go into our public hearing?
I actually can't.
Well, you can't do it on that.
Public hearing has to be.
Has to be as we.
In September, but I could have information available because I've got, I've already started working on, on a, on a, the final file, so I can certainly cut it from there.
Yes, Commissioner Ebbinger.
Just looking, some of the EDC issues we look at, and what benefits both sides of the river and how we can move forward together as a community. Every survey, every strategic planning session, everything I've been to identifies workforce as primary concern. And this is something that I had a presentation from Shannon as well. It was, it was impressive. I also shared the concern, are, are our schools, and I haven't heard whether Concordia or MSUM or M State are involved in this at all, but are our schools on board with this? But we have to be a participant on things that cover the metro area, as well as start formulating a Minnesota-centric response to our needs on this side of the river individually. So I think this is a good use of ARPA funds. But if, if somebody has some idea, can give me some feedback on whether our universities and colleges are involved, that would be good information.
And I'm not, I'm not sure that they were even requested to participate financially in Ignite. I, I know they were given presentations of the system that, and how it could probably correlate with what they already have within their systems, but I don't know that the state universities were asked to participate.
Right, the information that we have from Mason Radamacher, who's the VP of Workforce, just identifies that K through 12 partners had been asked to help.
I think, I think when you get to the state university system, that has, would have to go up to the chain to the Minnesota, and I don't know that that. Mr. Keely, did you have a?
Yeah, just a comment about ARPA funds in general. I'm a little concerned that we have this large amount of money, and it's one-time money. And it, to me, the spirit of that fund is to make a large lasting change in our community, and it seems like so far, we've kind of been piecemealing it out to smaller projects. I know that there are big things in mind, and this does seem like a good fit, and clearly I have approved everything, voted to approve everything that's come before us. But I just want to make sure that when we think about those funds, we have a vision for big lasting change in our community, and maybe this is a part of that, but, yeah.
Well, I think anything that we can do to help reduce the amount of help-wanted signs that we have in all of our entities and businesses, it's, it's a long-lasting investment. And, you know, I agree with you that, that we, it's nice to be able to have evidence of things that we do with ARPA funds, and there's going to be some things coming forward that we haven't shared yet as we're in preliminary stages, but there's going to be some things that are going to be long-lasting benefits, so. But I guess, I guess I'm wondering if we, are we all comfortable now with removing the Ignite dollars from our levy and having that shifted to ARPA consideration? Is that it? Can we just get a consensus for now? Is it, all right? So I think you've got that direction on that line item. Steve and Lori?
All right. Thank you. The, the next document, in addition to some of the, the adjustments that, that have already been mentioned, just wanted to point out, in going back and evaluating with our department heads and making their adjustments, we've also, we also utilized MCIT, MCIT reimbursement, and this year we had $101,385 more than what we had initially anticipated in our refund. We, we also had social service salaries and benefits of $123,313. We saved an additional $100,000, removed $100,000 from detox in the planning budget. Again, the, the building fund dollars of $400,000 that had been there incrementing since 2014 have been removed, and we also used additional fund balance of $170,505 for a total adjustment of $2,874,698 from, from the initial budget that was presented.
Well, the initial budget that was presented, yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. A few years ago, when we were in the process of doing our wage study, we implemented a freeze on hiring to help with some of the insurance pieces of that. Over the course of the last year, we've had significant workforce issues, and why, we just talked about the item before. And I'm, you know, certainly, these, these positions have gone through PIC, we vetted it out, we, as a board, support them. I'm, I'm curious, though, what our, the open positions that we had in 2021 that were levy-funded, what is that number? And, and, you know, obviously, we know that we need to fill these, but they're also, we're levy, those are levy-funded, right? So, there's money that's been taxed that's sitting out there that because we've had issues hiring, we haven't, you know, they've gone back into the reserves. And, and I think that it's important to know that, to just, as we move forward, I'd like to have that information soon or before we approve in December. That's one piece. But then maybe the unpopular statement that I'm about to say, if you look at our budget, we, we allocate a lot of levy funds for the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC, and they are organization that does great things within the metro. However, I have said for a year and a half, two years, I don't feel that Clay County is getting their, their, fair shake. It's important for us as board members to evaluate, when department heads come to us, what they're doing, how we can help them, what's maybe not going well, and adjust things from there. And families do the same thing. What makes sense to continue, does it make sense for me to continue to pay for my gym membership if I'm not using it? Probably not. I have read the EDC newsletters. Clay County is not listed, ever, ever. They don't have programs that they're championing, championing in Clay County. They don't have star spotlights on things in Clay County, and the line item is $510,000. I would, and I know that there's commissioners that serve on those boards, and it's probably an unpopular opinion, but I would like to see what we allocate to them reduced. And I, I don't know if they would even care. You know, we are, you can't compare Clay County to Fargo, you can't compare it to West Fargo, or even Cass County. But we are great at what we are, and we should be paying for an agency to help advocate for that, similar to what we're doing with downtown Morehead EDC, or the downtown Morehead, Inc. And I don't know what that percentage that I, or percentage that I'd like to cut it, or if it's $50,000 or $100,000, but I'm tired of us paying that large of amount to not get anything.
What do we pay annually to the?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Mojo, our allocation that we directly provide to, to the Greater Fargo-Morehead is $110,000.
The abatement is.
The abatement is part of that, yep.
Right, well, I, the 110 still is astronomical. If you think about what certain department heads make and the amount of work that they do versus what we spend for that, and we're not getting anything in return.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
In strategic planning, the concerns just expressed by Commissioner Mojo have come up in strategic planning for the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC. Not just Minnesota partners have indicated that there needs to be more of an emphasis on regional, and that's political sensitive speak for Minnesota's not getting a lot of services. Part of it is, it's difficult with the competitive abilities that the west side of our partnership has for Minnesota to get around some of the issues. We need representation in St. Paul, and the EDC has not been there. They're in Bismarck frequently, but the money is in Bismarck. The funding is in Bismarck. I don't know what the answer is on this, but $110,000 is a lot of money. And I am reluctant to say that we want to alter our presence, certainly emphatic that we don't want to eliminate our presence in groups that represent the entire region. But I'm also aware that in their surveys and in their strategic planning, they've identified this as an issue, and I would offer that maybe it's time we get with, with the executive director, Joe, over there and sit down and tell him what our concerns are and ask him how he's going to address it. Commissioner Campbell's been at this a lot longer than I, and he's probably got some good observations on it, but I, I certainly don't marginalize Commissioner Mojo's concern. And however we do it, we need to make sure that the EDC considerations, not just of Morehead, but of our Clay County cities as well, gets recognized, and we're partners with them on that.
Recently, Steve and I had an opportunity to attend a, a meeting that was requested by Commissioner Chad Peters from, from Cass County, and Joe from the Greater Fargo-Morehead EDC was there as well as Shannon. And, and again, the, the topic of everything is workforce, and right now, everything should, should be dealing a lot with workforce. EDC, its original vision was all about bringing high, high-paying jobs to the metro area. And somewhere along the line, I, I would agree that there's probably been a loss of focus in, in, in giving specific identification to each of us as entities. specific identification to each of us as entities. And I, and I brought up in that exact meeting when they wanted to promote in Minneapolis and they wanted to, to get people to move here and they suggested they go to liveinfargo.com and, you know, and I raised that issue with them. And I said, that's a classic example of us on this side of the river, you know, feeling like we're not being presented here. And, you know, and I think they're, that hit home with them and I drove that issue. Steve, you were there and you heard me say it to all of them, that, that from our standpoint and we're investing in something like that and then to suggest that they go to a site where they want to recruit these people to live, you know, we want them to live in Moorhead or we want them to live in Barnesville, but it's, so it's equal, you know, so we have to, but I agree with you, Commissioner Ebinger, that I think we need to have to heart to heart with them on this and I think we need to say that, that, that our future financial, and obviously their goal right now is also to look for less public money and to have it more private, right? So that's also a goal of theirs to bring it in that fashion where they can depend on. We have to remember that we do have on the EDC, we have a lot of members from this side of the river involved. We have our, our college presidents are involved. We have, our business community is present from a lot of our different businesses serve on that board as well. And for, for us to all, to say that there's been no benefit for us, you know, we have the opportunity, you read now where we have a lot of people that are coming here because of jobs in this, in this region. And one of the things that we need to focus on ourselves is advertising why they should move, move and live here on our side of the river. The EDC's job in the past was to, was to encourage good paying jobs here. It wasn't necessarily their job to suggest where they live. And we need, we need to keep that in mind. I would imagine there's several people that live in Clay County that are benefactors over previous work done by the EDC. The fact that they've got a, a good paying job in this community is important. And whether or not, and, and there's, in all likelihood, there's probably some, some of those folks that have decided on Moorhead as their home or Clay County as their home. Barnesville, Gilworth, Linden, we're growing too, so. I don't know, I don't know where you want to go with this.
And I appreciate that, but the reality is, I'm not sure, I know you say you hit, you hit the point home, but did, did you get a follow-up from Joe? I'm sorry that we haven't been as visual in the work that we're doing in Clay County. Here's what we're going to try to do, blah, 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 after the fact. There's still a live in Fargo, Fargo, live in Fargo website that we're supposed to be spending all this money for?
I don't know that we're spending money for the live in Fargo website, but that's Fargo's.
That's definitely not a live in County.
Well, Fargo made that website, not, not EDC. Do you have, do you have some more, Commissioner Mojo?
No.
All right. Well, and I guess like, as I mentioned at the beginning, we don't have to have any final decisions made on that. Truth in taxation will be based on a preliminary levy, but if you have additional feedback between thoughts between now and then for correction in the final budget, that would be appreciated.
I just want to point something out here that, and I, and this kind of does go to some of what Commissioner Mojo was talking about. When you look at our total levy at $42,649 compared to the 2021 levy of 40,564 and you see that 5.14% in there, if you take out what we were fortunate enough to do based on that insurance contract, if that wasn't there and those other cuts weren't there that we've done with our COLA and new request, we're, we're spending $4,084,978 more dollars than we, than we did in 2021 and 2022 prior to these, to those two items. So had we not had that insurance contract favorable with the reduced rates, I guess I'm just wondering how, and we've got COLAs included in there, how we still end up $4 million over? Because the cuts, you know, and some of the cuts that you talk about, Steve, the levy jail bonds, we, we put that in there that wasn't going to be really spent. It was to be put in there as a reserve. So I don't know that that's-
Normally, Mr. Chair, that the levy dollar, levy for the jail bonds would have showed up in the building fund in the, in the top categories of where the $50,000 would have been 450, I think is the, where that originally would have been placed or has been historically.
Total reserve balance? What's the total reserve balance you're transferring in?
Well, on this one, it's just, we had, we cut that 75% savings, so we're just looking at 170,000 of actual fund balance that we're using because we eliminated the levy for the 75% of the debt that's been paid off and the wind energy we were using to pay for that too, so.
And even without, and even without those, we're looking at a $7.8 million end result based on our current trends. So it just, it's, in a year, in a year when we had, you know, as Commissioner Mojo said, we had an awful lot of positions that were unable to fill that were budgeted dollars and you can't deny it because we've, we've had these people coming here every week. Every week they're coming here saying they need help for budgeted positions that, that means they weren't filled and the money wasn't spent. But yet we're still somehow, we're still saying we, we need $4 million more, you know, for sure, for sure $2 million, $2 million more than we had last year. And I, I mean, granted, I, I don't, I support every new request. Every new request made sense. That's not, that's not where my issue is. It just seems to me that if we didn't spend all of what we had last year in those areas and those are, we all know that what, Lori, is it 80 to 90% of our budget is payroll?
I think if you're, for the jail, the jail is one who, you know, we know we were short people a lot of that time. Some of that we're actually paying to other law enforcement agencies to house our prisoners.
Yes, yes. And that, and that, I'll give you that, I'll give you that on the, on the, on the jail piece.
Well, we can certainly work with Darren here over the next two weeks and, and work on getting that information, information for you guys for truth in taxation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just could we show the offsets as well? I mean, if we're going to look at the money that has not been expended on jailers, we want to see what that's cost us in other areas. I'm sure there's, there's overtime issues in every department that was running short staff. You know, it just, it's not necessarily having sat and looked at budgets for 25 years. It's not necessarily a windfall when you can't fill positions. It's very often it's, there's, there are secondary consequences. So if they're there, I'd like both sides presented so we know what the actual figure is.
Sure, no problem.
I was waiting for you to do your tagline.
One of these years I am not going to vote for the final budget if we don't drop the preliminary budget.
No, not that one. The revenue is over expenditures.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, well, okay. You want to hear that one? We always have revenues over expenditures and we still raise the dang levy. There, I said it.
And the last two documents are really more for your information than, than anything else. We've gone through the summary of revenues expenditures by departments and, and then also I did include the document that also shares what the, the difference, kind of to your point, Mr. Chair, where the increases or decreases are per, per the budget from the 2021 to the 2022 request. And so again, we've gone through these individually in previous meetings. If you have any additional questions, we can cover that. Otherwise, it was just more informational for you. But the county again appears to be in a good financial position based on, based on the percentages. The revenues again generally fall four to eight weeks behind the collections, but from an expense standpoint, we appear to be in a good position. With that, I would conclude my report and be open for any questions.
Knowing the conversation that we've had earlier, I think if you could come back in the three, I could support it.
In the, what, in the three, I could support it.
In terms of a final levy, that's what you would like to see? That's net. Is that what you're talking about? So from, so right now, based on-
I mean, not necessarily three, three, three oh, I just think if you could find some revenues over expenditures to apply it, if we're taking the $25,000 for Ignite out, hopefully it can shrink it down in a three percentage.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner.
Commissioner Ebinger's comments just reminded me, we had talked briefly at one point about can we discover how much we're spending on advertising jobs and some of those expenses and would projects like Ignite be able to absorb some of those if that did become a really beneficial project for the area? I would just be curious. So with, with the explosion in open positions, what has our expenditures looked like in that?
Yeah, we can get that to you also.
All right. Do we have any, any other questions moving forward today? So the presentation on the 14th is based on preliminary and then we can always still, and I, and I think maybe, so we have, do we have a meeting before that?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
No, because next week we're in.
Yeah, I can go through and make the adjustments we talked about today and I'll have that available for you two weeks for discussion purposes.
Yeah. Is there a reason why, why would, why would some people who receive their tax statement, why would some people have seen a reduction in the homestead credit and some don't? Can you explain that?
It would strictly be based on value, the value, valuation of the property, mostly on that. If it was totally eliminated, they didn't turn in some paperwork possibly that they were-
There's different classifications of the homestead credit and I think that was-
So, so, so does the value of the home, what, as the higher it goes up, does that then reduce?
Correct. As the value goes up, the homestead market value credit goes down and when you reach about 413,000, that totally disappears.
And those are not decisions made at the county level. Those are decisions made at the state level, correct?
Yeah, those are legislative.
However, it shows up on the property taxes, an impact on their property tax.
Right, yep.
The value is local.
Yeah, the value, the value is done locally, but, but under the rules, they have to be between 90 and 105% of actuality.
Right, yep.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee reports. I started to my left last week. Frank, would you like to, Commissioner Gross, would you like to start?
Last Tuesday, we had the big meeting and that, that was totally on the item that we discussed today, the merit system protection. So I pretty much covered that meeting there. Yesterday, we had that North Broadway Bridge update over at Fargo City Hall. I think we're a long way from decision yet there. I think the decision is to get rid of the current bridge, but do we put another one in there or not, you know, and it's just, there's a lot of discussion there and a lot of money involved in it, you know, but it's not the issue that's done yet. I don't know how many more meetings we'll need to do. I think Fargo first we'll have to decide whether they want it or not and whether we want to participate in. I mean, there's a lot of funds. First of all, there's funds to take the bridge down. Then you're going to have to have funds to, what are you going to do? Are you going to build a, one comparable to what we got or you want to go all the way and put a $17 million bridge in there? So a lot of discussion left on that. And I do have to say, Commissioner Campbell, you did a good job in presenting our side of it. Thank you for that.
All right, does that conclude?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. Last week I attended our AMC, my Environment and Natural Resources Policy Committee. We talked about our 2022 policy platform amendments and the proposals. A lot of really good information in terms of what they would like to take action on. One that was of particular note was one that had talked about currently as stands in, in terms of taxation and classification, when a solar garden, we're only permitting things at one megawatt and that's really because there's a tax classification change that happens above that. And Stearns County is proposing with, with properties that have more than one solar garden, changing that property classification to commercial. And I think there's some really good information on that. I think counties have significant interest in that. I think my concern is that solar gardens are only permitted to last between 20 and 30 years. And as stand, after that, if they'd like to pull up those poles and, and farm that ground, that really is allowable. The, the policy suggestion would be that they would be, I think would, would make people parcel those out and I'm concerned that, that would really change the look of these properties 20 and 30 years down the road. So I think good information that will be forthcoming. Certainly our assessors, State Assessors Association really would probably know that better than all of us. But seven different policy platforms were discussed. And yesterday I attended the, I did virtually tune in to the road discussion with the city of Fargo. I appreciate since we are 50-50 partners in that, that Clay County was included in the discussion. I do want to note that of that survey, that the cost was included, we had 247 Minnesota residents complete that survey. And I've said several times that there's been other issues where we've never had that amount of citizen input. And I just want to thank those that took time to complete that survey. We certainly take into account the wishes of the community and the folks that we serve, so I gratitude for that. And then I, that afternoon, I also attended the Resource Recovery Construction Committee meeting. Things are really trekking along out there. The footings and walls are going up quickly and they're, because of the cold weather, excavating only what they're needing to, to kind of help mitigate some of the cold weather, weather freezing. Did have discussion. It's nice to, to go to that and not see any changes in our contingency. That was a nice part of it. We had a long discussion about what the generator needs of that facility are. Joe's having discussion with the engineer and what that need would be. You know, I, I know we've talked about future land use and building use on that property and really hope that however we design and build will be thoughtful to future needs. So I think that that's something that we will continue to work on. And let's see, what am I missing? Oh, because of all the rainwater, our rain events, they did hire a truck to vac out some of that so that the subgrade wouldn't be compromised. So I think they were able to address- So I think they were able to address that need there. I did have discussion yesterday, I've had several landowners that either are affected by the diversion and bankment or land acquisitions with some, some further questions on some issues. So I did have some conversations with Eric Dodds, who had then forwarded my concerns on, so I'm waiting for feedback there. But that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinger.
Yes. I also virtually attended the meeting yesterday that the Fargo City Commission had in looking at the North Broadway Bridge. It's been somewhat covered. I do want to note that Commissioner Campbell was there representing our interest and probably has some things in his summary that would shed a little more light on this. I think the bottom line is, public has to realize the bridge needs to come down in fairly short time. They need to get it done for safety. And any replacement, if the decision is made to replace it, is going to be four or five years down the road. It's not going to be something that happens overnight. And the expenditure, the two variations of the bridge, one is to replace it as it stands now, which is subject to flood, having to be shut off when, when the floodwaters get high, is probably a lot more fiscally feasible, given our funding. And the, the long range expand, expanding the bridge to be above the flood levels is going to be, how much was, 18 million more?
Well, it's, it's, the bridge, it's, the bridge itself is probably 15 to 17 million, but then there would be additional land acquisition costs that would bring it to about 21 million. And I can, I can touch on that.
Yeah, a lot of those funding, a lot of those considerations are going to be on the North Dakota side.
Well...
They'd have to buy out housing and...
There, there is, but, but there, so the, the bridge itself, the recommendation is that would be a cost share on the bridge itself. But any work on either side of that bridge would be the responsibility of that entity to do. So, so if the, if the bridge was expanded, or whatever expansion Fargo would have to do on, on the Fargo side, that would be 100% their responsibility, including land acquisitions. There are a couple of options there that actually shows a road raise on the Minnesota side that goes all the way up to Wall Street. And so that would be an expenditure on the Clay County side. Based on, you know, so, so we have to keep all, that's why, this is really early in preliminations, but when you start getting to expansions of that level, you know, and I've, you know, I, I'm from Oakport, that's, I live that and I know that bridge. And I, I made the comment yesterday, Dave, that that is a convenience bridge. It's, it's a convenience bridge for the local neighborhoods to be able to have access. There, there's a bridge not many feet away that's out of the flood plain and they can travel all the time. So that, that gets to me into the difference about, does Clay County want to have a $2.5 million cost share on replacing a bridge, or do we want to have upwards of a $7 or $8 million cost share on an expanded bridge? Those are conversations we'll have later, but...
Yeah, I think the bottom line is, this is certainly not anything that's at a decision point, but there was a lot of good information that came out of that meeting. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaylee.
I also attended that North Broadway Bridge meeting virtually. As we are a 50-50 partner in that, if there are further discussions, maybe all commissioners could be invited so that there's equal representation in those meetings. Not that I necessarily would have said anything, but I did have some questions that would have been nice to ask. So, just a thought there. Yesterday, I also attended my AMC Health and Human Services Policy Committee meeting. We discussed some policy platform amendment proposals. There were a couple that were really interesting. One of them was, when we have folks that go to state mental health facilities, as soon as they do not meet medical criteria for placement there, then the county is responsible for 100% of that stay until we can get them into another facility to meet their needs. And the money for that 100% payment goes into the general fund for the state. So this proposal was that instead of that money going into the general fund, it should instead be an investment in stabilizing beds within the county and expanding that continuum of care within the county. To me, that makes total sense. That's what that money should be put towards, because how can we build out that capacity without that investment? Some other amendments that were really interesting, one was to modify Medicaid reimbursement to increase the rates by tying them to wage increases for employees in long-term care facilities. So what we're seeing statewide right now is a huge crisis in staffing for our long-term care facilities. It's projected, at one of the last meetings when those facilities got together and met, that 60 facilities across the state will be closing in 2022. There are currently 363 facilities, so that is going to be a major, major impact. And a lot of the facilities that are open right now are only at 50% capacity because they just don't have the staff and there's no travel nurses to bring in. The current rate for a travel nurse for a long-term care facility cited at this meeting was $105 per hour. So in our rural communities, there is no way that they can get travel nurses in. The governor's been talking about activating the guard to help staff some of these facilities, but with the numbers that he's projecting, only about 20 facilities would get fully staffed. So I thought it was a creative idea to tie that to the wage increases, because we need to make these facilities solvent in some way. Another proposal was looking at education neglect. Currently, that is tied in with the child protection statutes, so that's maybe a higher level of response than is necessary for truancy. And so the proposal was to remove that from child protection statutes and to tie it into child welfare instead. So there would be a welfare response and then connecting those families up with early intervention services instead. I don't know an awful lot of that, about that, so I'll have to look into that further. Finally, I just want to reiterate that I'm getting boosted this week. I hope others that are eligible get boosted as well. Like we said earlier in the meeting, that Public Health has three clinic options this week, today, Wednesday, and Thursday. It's really easy to make an appointment with Public Health or with any of the local pharmacies. So, that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. On November 23rd, we had a PIC meeting. Commissioner Gross has come in, and really the only thing that we had on that agenda was the merit system issue, which we acted on today. On Monday, I start off, I attended that bridge meeting with Fargo, and by the way, that was an actual Fargo City Commission meeting. And they had invited us, and, and actually, everybody had the option of attending in I think there's, as Commissioner Gross said, there's going to be a lot more dialogue to come on that whole process. I did ask Steve before our meeting this morning that to probably have Mr. Overball come and give the technical reasons why the bridge has to come down. And for, for you all to be able to see that. We've, we've seen it in subcommittee, or I have anyway, I was involved with a, a meeting with all the engineers from both MinDOT, the state of North Dakota, and other engineers. And I saw that firsthand about the reasoning behind it. But I think before, to make you all feel comfortable in that choice, to, and it is our responsibility based on ownership right now, that that would be a 50-50 cost.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Just that one piece? So, tuning in, it was my understanding that the, there are a recommendation that came out that the bridge needed to come down.
Yes.
Did the city of Fargo take action on that recommendation last night?
They, they, they have not, there has been nothing formal. Commissioner Preston did ask that that be put on their agenda as well. Steve, did you have a...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, I believe that they had said during the meeting that in two weeks they were hoping to bring that forward.
Okay. And so I, I think whatever happens, it's important that because we're 50-50, that our action agreed. I think that it absolutely has to come down, the public safety risk that, that is there for standing still is warrants it. But I think that we should take action close to the same time that they take action.
Yeah, and I, I think that's the intent. And just for your information, there's, we've already had some discussions with MinDOT. MinDOT supports that that bridge should come down. And they do have, the MinDOT does have a separate allotment of dollars that are, that deal with removal of bridges. And I, I, according to Dave, they've already earmarked funds for that, that purpose for this one. I believe that, I, I believe we still have to incorporate it into our five-year plan as, as an item in our five-year plan, but it should not alter any of our other projects. But in order for it to qualify it, it has, from what I understand of Dave, it needs to be listed in our five-year plan, which we could then modify. We'll have to do that as well. So there was an awful lot of discussion, a lot of different back and forth, I think, between Fargo commissioners on what option is, is best. I, I could only tell them from a funding mechanism, what I've, what I felt was more doable from the, this side of the river standpoint and where we get our funds, it's totally different than theirs. And it's certainly going to be a lot easier to get $2.5 million for a new bridge than it is going to be 10 million. You know, so, but those, those are things we'll all talk together about. Commissioner Kay, that goes to your issue, that we will certainly have, this will be something all of us will have equal information on by the time we make any decision. Okay, and then with that, then, I also attended the construction meeting for the Resource Recovery Facility. And so with the one area that, that I just want to expand on a little bit to Commissioner Mojo's discussion, was the, the construction contingency, not the owner one, but the construction contingency, is having a little bit of impact because of the wet, and that deals with de-watering. And so I, you know, so I think, but that, those are funds that come out of the construction contingency side of the project. So, we don't know exactly what that number is yet, but... And, and let's see, that, I guess that concludes my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the PIC meeting that's been addressed by, both by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Gross. Clean and I turned right around after, after ending board and begin preparing for board for the next week because of Thanksgiving. Yesterday, I participated in the Resource Recovery, you know, meeting that's been, oh, excuse me, yesterday, participated in the meeting with Brian and Mr. Melton and Kirk Rosenberg in regards to the Cooperative Service Agreement between the city of Moorhead and, and Clay County in regards to the, the Resource Recovery Facility. We've, we presented, we've worked, as we've reported before, we've worked with MCIT in the, in the establishing this proposed agreement, and now we've forwarded it onto the city of Moorhead for their director or feedback. And well, we plan to work with MCIT again after that, before bringing that before this board, but hope to have something before you here, close to the end of the year if possible. I participated in the North Broadway Bridge yesterday. It's been, been addressed by both, all the commissioners. And also the Resource Recovery Facility meeting that was covered by Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Mojo. Yesterday afternoon, had budget discussions with Lori Johnson and also had a meeting with Darren on multiple HR issues. Again, just to note, this is our fifth Tuesday. Generally, we don't have a board meeting on this Tuesday, but we shifted because as a board, you'll be at the AMC conference next, next Sunday evening through Wednesday. And we will be returning on December 14th. Our board meeting then, that week, will be an evening board meeting at 5:00 PM with Truth and Taxation at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Brian, anything for, Clean, anything more to add? All right, we're adjourned.